It is Thursday, July 18, 2024 at 6:00 PM. We are at the District Service Center in Cottage Grove, Minnesota. We would like to acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the land of the Medawakaton Dakota People. Medawakaton means dwellers of the Spirit Lake. Our first item on the agenda is roll call. Dana?
Ryan Clark.
Here.
Sharon Van Leer.
Here.
Eric Tesner.
Here.
Pat Dresscall.
Here.
Melinda Dulce's absent.
Simi Petnaig.
Here.
Katie Schwartz.
Here.
2.0, Pledgeable Agents, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, 3.0 is approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Sharon, second by Pat. Pat, any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 4.0 is comments to the board. At this time, individuals may... Items, 5.0. All consent items are considered routine and non-controversial by the school board and will be approved by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. Prior to the meeting, board members did have the opportunity to review each of these items and may have requested that an item be moved to an action item for individual consideration. That did not happen this evening, so may I get a motion to approve the consent items.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Simi, seconded by Sharon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, 6.0, information items. We have two this evening. 6.1 is a construction update that will be presented by Dan Pine, Executive Director of Finance and Operations.
Good evening, Chair Schwartz, members of the school board, Superintendent Nielsen. Tonight I will be giving you a construction update. I, you know, I do this for Sharon, but, so I apologize to Dewey and Kyle, because they've heard this before, but I was trying to think of a construction story. And there was this guy that started working for the county, and his job was to paint lines on the highway. So the first day, he did about five, six miles. Second day, he did about three miles. And third day, he only did like one. And his boss came up to him and said, you know what? You started out so well. I really disappointed you. Why can't you work any harder? He goes, why can't you get more miles in? And he said, well, boss, every day that pink hand got farther and farther away.
That's why you shouldn't leave.
Tonight we'll give you an update on construction. It'll be exciting. The, you recall that South Wachite High School has held a board, like a bond election November 7th of last year. We asked voters for authorization to construct $200 million in school expansions and renovations. Bond question one is worth $160 million. The bond question two is worth $40 million. They both passed. So work has commenced on the first of many, many projects over the next five years. The first step in these projects is the design of the buildings. And that process is led by the designers, the architects. So tonight, architects from WOLD and architects from KOMA will update the board on the progress of some of the school designs. Just before we start, I just want to give you a reminder of the construction schedule that we're still holding to. Nothing has changed much on this. I like to look at, you know, when they're finally done, the blue. And you can see that by the fall of 2026, we should be done with Cottage Grove Middle, Lake Middle, Oldman Middle School. And then by the fall of 2027, the high schools should be, or actually, Eastridge should be done in 2026, and then the other two high schools will be done in the fall of 2027. As I said, we're still in the green stage now, the design and planning. And if lots of input from lots of user groups, then we'll turn it over to Sal. Sal Bagley gonna present from WOLD?
Thanks, Dan. Good evening, members of the board and the public. Thanks for being here to talk about this exciting project. So I'm Sal Bag with WOLD Architects and Engineers.
And I'm Paul Lepkowsky with WOLD.
And we're here to talk to you on behalf of our entire design team today about the progress of the design at Woodbury High School. We've got a couple key members here in the audience. We've got our job captain or design lead, Dylan Sullivan's here with us. Certainly your facilities department, Dan Hines and Kyle Uker have been in many meetings with us, and they've got a few more left. And then we've got Sarah Sorenson-Wagner, the principal, who's been critical as part of the process too. So might call on somebody if there's a question that we can't answer.
We'll just give a quick outline of the project's scope, as promised in the referendum. Includes site improvements, including trying to fix or improve some of the traffic flow issues at the school, replacing the kitchen and cafeteria, the main office, getting a much-needed secure vestibule, which really involves redoing the whole office, building a new office, significant science renovations, a redo of the media center, which is going to be in much the same place but totally redone, and then career technical education improvements to bring it into parity with the other projects that you'll see tonight at the high schools. And then a significant amount of long-term facilities maintenance across the building in various spots. We did want to highlight the process that we've been going through a little bit. We follow a process where we bring stakeholders in and really do a generative design of the project with stakeholders. So of course, there was promises made and things that needed to be accomplished from the referendum, but how we go about doing that, we really involve a lot of people in the discussion. So there are some changes from the preliminary diagrams to what we came up with, and that is largely due to that group's input. Once they help us settle the plan down and figure out where and how things are going to be done in the building, we then break into what we call user groups to get a greater level of detail. And by doing that, we're able to involve a lot of people in the project. So we really are probably including just about everybody that the actual spaces are going to touch in the process of design in various ways. And one of the outputs of that that is things that we call designing criteria and guiding principles. So those become kind of written statements that help guide the design of the project. So we won't go through those in detail, but some of the really important ones were the guidance that the main office should be near the center of student activity, and that has profoundly affected the plan and how we implemented it. The idea of reorganizing the building where possible to be more departmental, so that colleagues can have some collaboration. And then a better relationship for the kitchen and cafeteria, and then making sure that the media center is as multi-use as possible. So you can see, we're talking about large group gatherings, conference rooms, and of course, accommodating the needs of storage for the media center.
I probably should have reviewed it earlier, but all design projects go through a few kind of phases. And so we talked about this at our middle school update. So schematic design is really when the advisory group does their work. The user group and detailed engineering is design development. We've really just crossed over to the threshold into design development with this project. So recently did a schematic design estimate with Kraus Anderson, the construction manager. And we've been doing those user group meetings. You probably saw on the slide, we actually had all-day meetings on Monday and Tuesday of this week with staff again, and of course, with Sarah and some others. So here is our working floor plan. We call it a draft because, of course, I sometimes joke, it changes every day, right? When we learn something from someone, or we try to meet a new goal. But I'll explain the floor plans. This is the lower level. Just to orient everyone, north is up on this, so the main entry would be at the top. You can see that main entry with an arrow is called out. The intent is to build an addition and do some renovation to relocate the main office, or you could think of it as the administration directly next to that, to have the appropriate security relationships, as many of the projects are doing. So the main office would have things like the principal, the assistant principals. We would have the nursing or health office there. We're intending to have a break/workroom for staff there, some storage, conference rooms, things of that nature. And then I'm actually going to toggle, and then I'll come back. The intent is actually to have a staircase inside that space, so that's what those little lines are, and then have student support actually directly above that. And so things like counselor, school psychologist, mental and chemical health spaces, and associate reception, their own conference room. And so those colleagues can both work near each other by being stacked and having a staircase. We can have families come in, be greeted, be sent directly up to counseling. But then it also has the benefit of being able to have administrators closer to students on both levels of the building. It also made it a little bit more manageable space instead of one large volume on a single floor plate. So as Paul indicated, that ended up being a big driver of how the floor plans landed, with wanting to have that golden rod colored block in that part of the building. Another couple points I'll make, so you can see there's, the whole building is shown in this plan, and rooms that have gray in them are not getting major renovations. That doesn't mean they won't maybe necessarily have lighting replaced in them or some painting, but we've been using this as a tool to help communicate to users and certainly you and the public where they can expect major improvements to be happening. Paul mentioned that one of the goals of the advisory committee was to get a more departmental organization. And so as we seek to improve the science labs that you have and get the right quantity, there was actually a proposed relocation of the fax department. So just below the purple block that says sped is actually where your fax spaces are today. We're going to relocate them, I'll show you on the next level, so that science can be all together. So we've got our 12 science labs in that prep space as for them in the green. Then if we go continue to, on the north side, you can see there's a lobby right when you enter. And if you were to come in the building, go through appropriate security processes, pop out into that lobby, and then turn to the right, that's where you would go down the hallway to connect to the new cafeteria and kitchen addition. That is that hallway just to the north of the locker room. So that's the existing part of the hallway. You can see some little dots up and down, so that's kind of where the wall is. And then we're building from there on. Part of that area does have the existing pool in its space right now, so just to help orient you on site, that's the place we're talking about, although this addition will be quite a bit larger than that volume is. In the cafeteria, it's a double-height volume space, so that'll show up on both floor plans. And the kitchen and servery, or the place where students actually get their food, is just to the west of that. We've also got, thinking about the food that needs to come in and the trash that needs to go out whenever we're talking about eating, we've got a loading dock and receiving area associated there as well. And then a couple of fun features. So we've got, many of you may be familiar with the concept of a learning stair, or kind of a tiered environment for students to sit and dine and socially gather has been planned as a part of that, as well as a space you can see called the den. And that's really, it's a part of the cafeteria that's inclosable, still supervisable, to really create a different environment for some students and also double as like a nice meeting space for large groups. It's a good example of a feature. It's just taking some of the square footage of the cafeteria and giving it more than one job. And something we saw in tours, actually at Hudson High School, was kind of the inspiration. So that's an example of the kind of influence the advisory committee has. Then I don't want to miss anyone on this level. We do have quite a bit of renovation in the high-needs special education program area, so that's really all the square footage that's called out in that burgundy color or purple color. So that's realignment of sizes of rooms and features of rooms to better meet their needs as well as replace some demountable partitions, redo lighting, kind of a hybrid of programmatic and maintenance work. And then last but not least, on this level, we've got some renovations proposed in both the boys' and girls' athletic locker rooms. Then if I go upstairs, I'll start at the top again just to orient people. So if you imagine we came in and went directly up the stairs, that's where you'd see that student support area again. Directly to the left or to the west of that, you can see a space called upper deck. One of the goals of the advisory committee was to make sure that this building has really good, I'm just going to call it circulation or flow and function. And with having, people having to go back and forth to the cafeteria from the academic area, they really wanted to have a connection on the upper level to that space and not only on the lower level. And so you can see the cafeteria volume will actually kind of stretch and touch the upper level of the academic part of the building, and you can get into the cafeteria that way as well. So there will be a small amount of dining space in that upper deck, as well as a staircase. And then you certainly could go downstairs and into the hallway as well. You can see the media center kind of in the heart of the academic part of the building. As Paul indicated, that's where the media center is today in large part. We're probably, we're reshaping the edges of it, is maybe how I'd call it, and then certainly doing a big reorganization to meet these new goals. We've got a few spaces called out in that green color that says CL, so those are classrooms that are getting maybe right-sized. A couple, there's, each one kind of has its own story. One of them is in the current principal's office, for example, one's in the current athletic director's office. There's two over by the auditorium to try to help serve for some lost space from the addition. So we've been working carefully with Sarah to make sure that nobody gets lost in the shuffle, as we are moving people around quite a bit. And then as while we're staying over there, you can see in that, it's a little hard to see on the screen, it's an orange color right next to the word lobby by the auditorium. There's three spaces that say cook lab, design lab, and prep classroom, so that would be the relocated fax department. And so that's where the kitchen is today. So for those who are familiar with the layout at Woodbury High School, the intent is to take them, again, as a department and reconstruct their spaces over there. There's some nice ancillary impacts they'll benefit from, like being able to bring things directly into their space from the existing loading dock. Right now, they have to cart things around. There are two small but very important additions on either side of the auditorium. They're a little hard to see, they're in gray, but it kind of fills in the corners on either side of the auditorium to house both music and theater storage, and so kind of associated for both of those departments. And then last but not least, on this level, at least for major program areas that are getting touched, would be the CTE and art wing. So you can see there's major renovations proposed for both departments. The northern two most art rooms are getting, the walls of the rooms are staying the same, but we're improving the cabinetry and the storage and certainly the quality of the materials. Whereas the third or southernmost space is getting right-sized to be an equitable-sized third art room. So it's, it requires the relocation of somebody who's down there. And then across the hall is our CTE spaces. So you can see we've got our wood shop, our trades and industry multipurpose and robotics lab, a computer lab, a flexible classroom, and then an auto shop. So just had a meeting, for example, earlier this week, talking to them about all of that and trying to nail down equipment and things like that. So there's lots of details with a space like that. I'm trying to think if there's any other critical things on the floor plans before.
I can just offer that, I think with the opportunity to do all these things in the building, we're really able to, I think it's going to change the way the building feels on the inside. Between the media center and the new cafeteria, which I think you can think of as a commons, it sort of links the main entry with the athletic area, it's going to give it a very different feel and get it away from some of the cells-and-bells sort of way that schools have been designed in the past, and hopefully really improve the experience for everybody in the building.
So can I ask a couple questions? So this, where the wood shop and the art spaces, that's, that's an addition off of where the current, like, I know now when you go and there's that door that comes in right across from the media, that's a new, is that a new space that's being built, or is that?
Thank you for pointing that. I probably can't use a clicker on a monitor. So if you see where the green art wall ends, the wall, so if you were to draw a line straight across, that's where the building ends today. So there is an addition there, kind of where it juts out.
Okay.
So there's an expansion to right-size all of those spaces. But I would say in large part, that part of the project is renovation-based.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then on the first slide, you had mentioned the cafeteria. So how many kids can now sit in the, because I know now the cafeteria is not big enough for all the kids, like if you're at a lunch or whatever.
Sure.
So how many more kids can sit in the new cafeteria versus the current cafeteria?
So we've been talking about making sure that into the future, even thinking about future growth for the building, even though that's not our prime directive right now, that you could operate three lunches if you so chose. So we've really been thinking about Dylan and Dan and Kyle and Sarah, I think it's planning for 2,500 students across three lunch periods.
Oh, okay.
So that's not what enrollment looks like today.
Right.
And we're not increasing the classroom count to meet that 2,500, but that's been kind of a core tenet of the cafeteria space.
Okay. And then, and this is maybe a dumb, like, but the main entrance will look like an obvious main entrance, correct?
Yes.
I mean, and I don't say that just because...
We hope so.
I mean, my child was a junior at Woodbury High School before I figured out where the main entrance was, so I really would, that's a personal preference.
Actually, I'm glad you said that. So right now, as you walk up to the building, there's two, I would say, architecturally very equal sets of doors.
Yes.
And it's not quite obvious which one you go to.
Correct.
You'll actually notice in this plan, the proposal is to actually, you know, have the same number of doors, but we've put them all together. So the main office is actually kind of covering up one of those sets of doors, and then we're making the other set much more grand with more doors.
Okay.
And so the main office will kind of touch what you think of as one of those rounded stair towers today.
So then when you come into the main entrance, like you'll...
It'll be, it'll be very apparent.
Okay.
Yeah, between the addition and what we will do with the canopy, the fact that it will have some grandeur and presence, yes.
And so...
Signage would go a long way, yep.
And so will the activities entrance? Because I, that's like, because I know that there's the south entrance and the activities entrance.
Yes.
And the, so they'll all still be part of this system as well?
Yeah, and I didn't talk about the activities entrance, and thank you for saying that. So if you can see, it says activities entrance on here. So we are going to, I'm going to call it reconstruct and reorient the activities entrance, because right now it's quite far back in the building. So it will come out closer to the, where cars drive.
Okay.
To give it more prominence. So that's getting reconstructed, and then you'll see kind of the loading, receiving cafeteria large volume, and that will flow seamlessly into the new main entry. And so you can think of it as that nearly the whole front or face of the building is kind of getting totally refaced.
Okay.
Right, with new square footage. So lots of opportunity to improve that, that immediate, where's the front door?
Did I miss it, or did it not show? Where is the theater and the band rooms? Where is that at?
Oh, so those are actually upstairs. It's a funny building to like, imagine, but, so those are upstairs on the south side or the bottom of the slide. There, the gray volume that's got, so there's a big box with things on either side of it. So that's the auditorium with the music rooms on either side of it.
Okay.
We don't have much scope inside those rooms, because they've been recently renovated with your LTFM project, but those departments are benefiting from the storage additions that we're doing. All good questions.
And then, oh, okay, I'll wait for you to keep going, sorry.
Oh, we just had a few example user group drawings, just to help people understand the, kind of the phase of the project and the level of conversations we're having. So I sometimes joke that these are wrong the day we publish them, right? Because we met with Sarah's team a couple days ago. But here is a floor plan and an ACON view of the first floor, so that would, this would be the main office or the administration, just starting to show the important space relationships we've learned about. So we've been talking about, you know, door swings, where's glass, where are marker boards, where's cabinetry, where are... where are outlets, who should be next to who, who has to see what? And so we use both 2D and 3D graphics to try to convey what that might look like and feel like. So I'm gonna walk you through it on the, in big picture form, on the right-hand side on the floor plan. So if you came in the main entry, you would come into what's called a weather vestibule, kind of get out of the cold, and then you would get buzzed into a secure vestibule. If you were standing in that space and you looked to your right, that's where you would see the security window, and so you could check in there and your business would be sorted out. Maybe your business is to go into the main office, in which case you would be buzzed into the main office or that space that says recep, so that'd be reception for attendance and things like that. Then, along the north side, you can see a series of offices. The labels certainly could move around, but we've been talking about the athletic department or athletic director and their support being there, the SRO, and then all of the other offices are designed really to be the same, but we've been talking about the assistant principals and the sped coordinator and things like that. Then on the core, we've got our large conference room. The TLT would be two staff toilets, so both visitors and staff could use those, you know, things like the safe and storage, and then the other element in the center there is the staircase I mentioned that goes up. Then on the south side, we've got the principal's office and their administrative support and a few other things. And then last but not least, we've got that health office, so space for cots, a bathroom, an office, things like that. And then, so then you can see kind of the phase we're at, as we're starting to move into the 3D and understanding, you know, where do we want transparency and glass and sightlines? Where is privacy a higher value? What do we need on the walls to support that space? And so that's kind of the level of detail we're just starting to get into. Few other example spaces, I won't go through all of them in quite as much detail, but since we talked about it, so here is the CTE floor plan and Axon. So on the right-hand side, I'll talk through the floor plan. A huge driver in spaces like this is the equipment. And then moreover, beyond just the equipment, it's like, it's safety clearances needs and access needs. So we start understanding, you know, what model of that are you gonna have? And how much safety clearance does it need? And that's a big active conversation today. The computer lab, you can see on there, we've got that multipurpose room, flexible classroom that can expand out into that flex space so that they can, you know, break out, do some activities. And then on the south side, again, you can see that transportation auto shop. Conversations we have there is around, you know, part storage, where's the air compressor? How many bays do we need? Where are the garage doors so the cars can go out, in and out easily? So those types of conversations. Here is a little bit more zoomed-in plan of the kitchen and cafeteria. So you can see here, we've got, I'll start on the left. So in the kitchen, you know, we have the office, storage for food in the form of both dry, or I should say, dry cooler and freezer storage. We've got the servery, so that's where students would actually go through the lines to get their food. Lots of conversation around what that experience wants to look like and feel like for students with your nutrition services department and building administration. And then the dish return. Then if we move into the cafeteria, furniture will be a future process, but we certainly like to show furniture for scale, so we've been planning around that capacity that we've been talking about. Lots of openings to that hallway on that south side, so you can see those little dash lines represent shutters or openings in that wall. I don't think we've mentioned it yet, but the cafeteria itself will be designed as one of those storm shelters we talked about when we talked about the Oldman Middle School. So the cafeteria proper will be that hardened construction. So while we're working to have as much transparency and openness into it, we do have to have a plan for how do those walls harden themselves in the event of the storm that we're designing around. Then I already mentioned the den, lots of transparency into that. And then we've got some bathrooms that, not joking, have been a really hot topic over the past week of exactly where they should be and all of that kind of stuff. So this is a space that's in flux, has changed a couple times this week.
I just wanted to clarify, we mentioned that the furniture is a future process. It is part of the referendum, it's just not part of the construction package, so there will be furniture for, when it, when it opens up.
Yeah, yeah, just showing it for scale. Good point. And then I think this is my last little exam, so we have a drawing like this for every single impacted space, but we thought we'd just show you kind of some examples. Here's the last department thought would be a good example, so here's the fax floor plan. So I already labeled the classrooms when I went over the overall. I think the interesting part that's developing here is the interconnectedness that this department's really looking to seek so that their spaces are multi-use. So at the second meeting, we actually spent a lot of time reconfiguring to get this central flex space where they can get to their department office and storage that can be shared so that things don't have to be duplicated. And then we've talked about having this cooking lab, as well as this prep classroom where maybe some light cooking activities can happen. And then last but not least would be the design classroom, where things like the fashion and the sewing things happen. So spent a lot of time with that department, making sure that the inner workings of them allow for some free-flowing. Last but not least, before we get into schedule, would be draft site plan for this project. This is, it's a tough project to graphically display, so we thought the best thing to do would be to kind of draw new intended parking lot layout on top of existing to help you get some context. The biggest thing I'm gonna call your attention to is, we're really seeking to improve, I always try not to say parent, just student pickup and drop-off, flow and function. And one of the major challenges that's been identified is, once people get off Wood Lane Drive, they get through the light, then they have to stop at the stop sign, kind of right away. And then similarly, when they're trying to leave the site, that stop sign really becomes a bottleneck. So through a lot of traffic observation and discussion, the proposal at this time is to really reorient that road. Once you get on site, you'll see it no longer comes to that T-intersection. And actually, if you get onto the site and you were gonna, to go to the south to do student pickup and drop-off, you don't have to stop anymore, would be the proposal, you can free-flow. And so you would take, you know, you'd go straight and then you'd veer to the right, and then those red arrows are kind of intended to show car traffic. It would function, once you get to that south side, actually very similar to Oldman, right? Where there allows for two lines of queuing space, moving in one direction, and then going down to one line and then allowing people to leave again, with limited access in and out of that parking lot, so that we can try to reduce the number of people that seek to cheat the line and go park in the parking lot. It causes a lot of traffic challenges, right? Because it's, there's really not a lot of traffic control measures to force people to behave that way today, and so this is what that's seeking to do. Then, we are proposing flipping staff parking in the bus lot. I should say, the bus lot right now is where staff parking is labeled on this. So buses will still come and go from Wyndham Way, but they would come in and go immediately to the west. And then staff parking would be on that very easternmost side of the building, and that would actually be accessed from the north, right? You can see the, it's maybe a comically large stop sign on the site plan, just to make it really obvious. So to prioritize traffic going to and from the student pickup and drop-off, we would have a traffic control measure there. And again, a lot of that is to try to inconvenience people trying to do pickup and drop-off at the front door. Right now, you kind of have an official pickup and drop-off going on on the south side, and then people who don't, who see that line and don't feel like going into it, go to the front door. And so we actually are trying to discourage that by making it less convenient. So I'm sure there's other things I should point out on here, but the, way before I got into all of that, the additions are in blue, I should have said that. So you can see here the, how I mentioned, the whole north side of the building and the face is gonna have a significant amount of improvement. And then we've got those more surgical additions on the south side for those storage rooms and the CTE.
So, so staff coming in, they have to come in from the Ojibwe side?
They would come in Wood Lane Drive, and then they would go to that intersection where there's a stop, and there will be a left turn.
And then they'll turn left, okay.
Yep, then they'll turn left, yep. It is, we've been working closely with the city. There is a, as a part of the district's last conditional use permit, really only allowed bus traffic to come and go from Wyndham Way.
Okay.
It's a, it's one of the conditions, because that's the only type of vehicular traffic that's permitted to go, come and go from that southern portion of the site, so.
And then, what does this do to the amount of parking available at the school?
We've been working very hard to try to hold it, hold it harmless, so to not, to not lose spots. It's kind of reconfigured and you'll, you'll gain some here and you'll maybe lose some here. Like, for example, the south parking lot, you'll probably notice it will have less than it has today. Some of it gets made up with striping the bus lot for staff, so we have been tracking that.
So how does that work for, and maybe Sarah, you have an answer for this. How does that work for stuff like, you're coming to, like, the fall academic award night where you have to already park like eight miles away to, to be there? Like, how does that, how will that work in terms of the number of people and the number of cars all converging at 7:00 PM on the school?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. We need a microphone, yes.
Well, you know, because you've attended many events, right? That the parking is just what it is, and we have a limited amount of land that we have, so we will be striping the new bus lot, so that's where a lot of people-
So a lot of cars can park.
The new bus lot will still be striped, so, and probably a lot more accessible to parents, but they still will have to park down that way and walk to the south entrance, or they'll have to go up in that student parking lot and walk down the sidewalk.
Okay.
So-
But all student parking will now be on that, I mean, because I remember when student parking used to be on both sides of the building, but now it's all gonna be on that side of the building.
It will all be up in the big lot, we call it, the general parking lot, that will all be students.
And so then they can only come in through the main entrance?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And we made that switch a couple of years ago. We only do parent drop-off, and we don't allow student parking at the south entrance for security.
Yep.
And it drives them always to the front, but it just kind of then changes our security issue, because now they all want to go to the activities entrance, which is locked.
Right.
And they have to walk to the main entrance. So I've been fortunate, I also worked at Park. Like, I know that students from Park also have to walk from the parking lot all the way to the main entrance, and we've all been to Eastridge, and it's quite the trek also to the main entrance, so we all can handle a couple extra steps.
Thank you. I should mention that this, this is a draft site plan, so this is subject to city review. So they've seen this many times, have been having positive conversations, have no reason to believe we're gonna run into any hiccups, but it's not formally approved yet. So that won't be submitted to them until later in the process. I think the last thing we'll end on is schedule, so I already referenced schedule a little bit. So we've finished schematic design, we're in design development, so we're kind of midstream, is a good way to think about it. Design goes through December of 2024, and then the project will be going out to bid early next year. And the construction will be in phases from summer of 2025, as Dan Pyeun's schedule review said, through, we call it through summer of 2027, AKA done for fall of 2027. And the final phasing is something that Kraus Anderson will continue to work on. Cool. Any other questions, can go back to anything? Sarah, Kelly, anyone said, thinks we missed anything?
I mean, as someone who won't have a child in this school when this is done, I'm very excited about it. Like, I wish, I'm not excited enough to have another baby, but I am excited enough that like, this is-
Maybe come to an event, that might scratch that itch, yeah.
But this is, this looks really great.
Thank you.
No!
Great, thanks for having us.
Thank you, Sal and Paul, and now we'll have Mark from Koma come up and talk about Eastridge and Park. And I do want to mention that you'll see a little more, you'll feel like you're seeing a little more detail on the next two schools, and that's solely because they started their design earlier than we started the Woodbury design. So there's just a little different phases in the design.
Thank you, good evening, everybody, the board and public. Again, Mark DeBois, lead architect with Koma. We will start with Park High School and then move into Eastridge, but have a time for questions and comments. And I guess I'll say, just by way of introduction, that our team and Sal and Paul's team have tried to, and I think successfully, worked in tandem to try to be as consistent as possible. So I won't bother going through a lot of the details of the process. Our processes have been very similar, with the same leadership team group meetings, advisory group meetings, user group meetings, meetings with the city on all of these projects together. And we've tried to help develop district standards along the way, so I think that's been beneficial. Park High School, we'll start there. Again, the, just to highlight the goals of the referendum, and we tried to stick with that. But I will say that there have been other ancillary pieces that have been able to have been folded into the project's scope as we've gone to try to resolve some other deficiencies or weaknesses of the building or the site. But again, the primary goals were to expand the CTE program, to modernize it, both with the facility and equipment and infrastructure. We're also adding the new kitchen and cafeteria addition to serve the current population, as well as a future of perhaps up to 2,500 students on this site. And then, we also wanted to try to consolidate the administration, the student services into a more coherent and easily accessible portion of the building for both visitors, but also the students and the staff. Again, as I mentioned, we had leadership teams, which were primarily Principal Todd, Christine Schaefer, Dan and Kyle from the facilities department and myself, and they, we kind of guided the overall process in a monthly manner. We also had these advisory group meetings, which included all department leads that could act as ambassadors to the other staff. And then we had the user group meetings based on specific areas of the building, whether it was kitchen, cafeteria, administration, CTE, and the like. So we've been continuing that process. And as Sal and Paul mentioned, we are, at Park High School, we are in that design development stage, so schematic design has passed, we're in design development, working our way towards another estimate. That's another component of all of these projects, is at the end of each design phase, Kraus Anderson, the construction manager, is taking our documents and reviewing them against the budgets so that we're sure that along the way, we're staying on track for the funding that's available. Some of the key points that we have been aiming at from a design standpoint for Park, obviously, this building was built in 1965, and it's had many revisions, renovations throughout the years. But one of the things that we talked about early on was trying to, to the best we could, modernize and sort of take some of that 1965 institutional feel away and replace it with a more modern aesthetic that can serve the current and the future population. Obviously, as we mentioned, the cafeteria and the kitchen needed to be right-sized to be able to serve up to 2,500. Again, they currently have about 2,000 in the student population, but with the infrastructure and the kind of core spaces, now is the time to size them for the future. And also, the career and technical education space, as I mentioned, the expansion of it and reconfiguration to try and modernize and bring that program into modern day and into the future. And we also were trying to improve the secure entry along with the administration from what it is today. I'll start with the site, because as you may be aware, this project, the scope has, I would say always, but it has expanded to try to rectify some issues at Crestview Elementary as well. So obviously, it's sort of treated as one campus, and what we've been trying to do to alleviate some of the obvious traffic issues along 80th is to separate pickup and drop-off from buses and visitors. Currently, everybody flows through that south parking area and drive area, just south of Park High School. Also, there is considerable backups on 80th for the pickup and drop-off at Crestview. So we're trying to, in essence, take care of two sites at once by creating a new road through both sites, with the main entry for both now being at an expanded Crest, at the existing Crestview entrance, but an expanded entry point there. So because those two schools are staggered in their times, there won't be cross-traffic there, but both will be using that entry. And for Park, that traffic will flow towards the north and then across the site to a final drop-off or pick- to a final drop off or pickup location in front of the new plaza cafeteria and kitchen addition on the north that we'll get into in a moment. The buses will remain pulling in and through on the south side, visitors will remain where they are. Those parking lots will be renovated, but not modified in their access or size. There will be some additional parking on the north road that shows up, that will alleviate some congestion that occurs during events, also can be used for students and staff. The fields, based on some of our additions and, and working of the roads, um, will be reconfigured, such that uh, two soccer fields will be developed, uh, over one north of the ice arena and one in the Crestview site. It will be able to be used by Crestview for recess and as a shared space. The football practice fields will be moved and reconfigured a bit on the north side of the road, uh, just west of the stadium. And there will be some additional stormwater retention on the site as well to accommodate the additional impervious area that is being put together on the additions. Is there any, I'll stop there because the site is perhaps of some interest. Is there any questions or about the traffic flow that's being proposed through the site?
So students would come in from Crestview and then drive all the way around the building? And then they also exit out back through Crestview, or is there an alternate?
No.
Okay.
They would, uh, if, if.
Oh, there's the one-way exit, it's like a one-way street?
Yes.
Okay.
Out onto, um, ideal. Student parking would remain on the east side for the most part, um, and so that uh, traffic light there would remain as, as an entry point off Eightieth as well.
But students would not be able to, and other than that thing down, the entry off by Crestview, there's no entry, there's no new entry on Eightieth for?
Correct. Correct. We have been uh, in communication with the city, and there is a plan that the city has for reworking, I don't know about reworking, but repaving and uh, Eightieth itself. And so we've gone through many iterations of options of how to enter off Eightieth. And um, because of the cross streets that run from the south and up into Eightieth and the lights and such, the city didn't really want to create any offsets from that or any new pieces that way. So um, we've been working with them over the past several months to try to come up with a solution that works for their traffic patterns as well. Okay, we can move. This is a draft of a plan of the plaza, uh, and it will make more sense when we look at the overall building. But up on the north side, that road that's coming in at a diagonal, that is the portion of the drop off and pickup, uh, new road. And then people would be dropped off in that darker gray lane, um, and then enter to the cafeteria uh, entry through a landscaped plaza that will have site features such as planters and raised planters and benches and seating areas for uh, outside, eating, bike racks and, and general landscaping. This is an overall diagram, and I apologize if it's a little hard to read, the building is large. But we, again, similarly, most of the, the gray areas are areas that will not be touched as part of the referendum work. And again, at uh, Park High School, we do have a combination of referen- referendum bond funded work, i.e. most of the additions and kind of major reconfigurations, but also long-term facilities maintenance funded projects, such as some of the more minor renovations within the building. Uh, again, trying to create a, a little bit of a different pattern of traffic and organization of the building as a whole. The south entry will remain as the main entry. But we, in that kind of lighter green area, we are looking to consolidate the administration and create a, a more effective, uh, secure entry through the commons area. The health office will also be moved up to the front in that light blue, and there will be some special education services in that kind of mint color to the right. From that point, um, of that sort of main east-west hallway on the south side, because we are building the new cafeteria and kitchen, that whole center area, which is the cafeteria and kitchen, is going to be repurposed. And running north-south through the middle of it will be what we've affectionately called the main street. And along that street will be some of the student services you see in purple. Counseling, mental health, um, family services. And then it's, as it moves towards the north and towards that yellow rectangular shape, which is the cafeteria, we end up with another commons area that we'll look at a little more closely with a student store that's part of the, the business program. The, the western side of the building is the academic side, so purple is the science rooms, lavender is the facts, blue being the art, and then the orange being the industrial arts. We'll go into more detail of those as we go, but this gives you sort of an orientation of the entire building and the scope thereof. As I mentioned, the additions on the north side, the primary addition being the cafeteria in yellow, which is, in this site as well, is the storm shelter and the new kitchen and loading dock area, which serves that. Move into just some enlarged areas, and we don't need to spend a ton of time with them, but we'll walk through, again, this is the south entry, the main entry, which would remain the main entry. Coming through a secure vestibule into an area where there would be a greeter, who would then direct traffic either into the secure office area. So we're consolidating everything from attendance to um, the principal, assistant principals, special ed director, uh, activities director, office manager, um, SRO, and work rooms, conference rooms, and, um, and the like, are all within a secure perimeter, within that kind of light green. Once into that, once you've done, you've met with who you needed to as a visitor, you could access back through the building, or if you're a student coming in between hours, you can access back through this door, back into the main lobby, which then gets you to the rest of the building. As I mentioned, we're moving the, the health office and the nurse space closer to the front for a little bit easier access and more um, connection to the, excuse me, to the front of the building and the ad, uh, administration.
So is this the lecture?
Oh, sorry.
Is this the lecture hall?
It is. That's a good point, um, for orientation, for those of you that are familiar with the building, that sort of angled portion on the south is the current lecture hall. So the risers that are in that lecture hall will be removed, and that space will become the front office.
Okay.
So there'll be new windows on the front for those offices, and that will start to um, modify the front of the building, that front face of the building aesthetically too.
So will that space be then put somewhere else in the building, or is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, we'll get there. So, oops, I'm sorry. So moving north from there, um, along the bottom of this image is that main east-west hallway. And that, that main street is the one, that, that hallway that you see running north-south. That is in essence running right through the existing cafeteria, if you're familiar with that space. So to the left of that, uh, to the west of that, in the purple, is again, the counselors, psychologists, student services, all sort of combined around one of the courtyards in the, in the building. To the north of that is, in essence, the replacement of the lecture hall, but it's a more multi-purpose space now. The lecture hall with the fixed risers is limited in what you can do in that space. What we're doing, uh, north of the student services here is creating a space that can be used at any time of the day, primarily, we're viewing this as the online learning space. So it's going to be flexible seating, it's going to have, um, obviously, computer data power and everything for students. But we're viewing this as kind of the location where a lot of the online students will be whenever they're in the building. You'll, you might notice some double doors, um, on the north side of that. So the multi-purpose, multi-use portion of that space is that by moving furniture and closing those doors, that can become a large group, perhaps for all staff meetings or something along those lines. To the west, uh, sorry, I'm sorry, to the east of that main street, we have the new inclusion center, or relocated, um, with the liaisons, student liaisons. And then we are reconfiguring and relocating the business classes and, and department into those kind of slate blue areas, which are connected to a school store, which will be on this kind of main street and commons. We've heard a lot about the business department, um, developing products and selling them, and so this seemed to be a natural spot, and it's in a much more publicly, um, visible area. These images, again, are a bit disjointed, uh, to fit onto the page, but these would be the uh, remodeled or completely new science rooms. At the end of this process and project, there will be eleven science rooms throughout the building, so several of them will be untouched as part of this, some of the newer ones. But um, in order to create larger and more flexible uh, science spaces, we are renovating all the rooms in purple. Just as a highlight, in this, we have, through many user group meetings, have had discussions about the, the use and the flexibility of the space, the lab spaces versus the lecture spaces, and so some of that is going to be achieved by flexible furniture. Some of it, of course, is fixed furniture and fixed casework, um, for, primarily for the labs. And that will vary, excuse me, that will vary based on the subject matter, whether it's earth and, earth and space versus chemistry or biology. One of the other, uh, major reconfigurations and expansions is in the industrial arts wing, which is these orange spaces you're seeing here. Perhaps one of the significant moves is, if you're familiar with the existing building, this uh, room or lab on the southern end of this diagram is currently the woods. But we have understood that the woods program, the desire is to expand that into more construction to make the pro, the CTE program in general, um, more effective in training future workers for the, in, in the trades. So in order to do that, uh, to provide a space where larger construction can happen, we're flip-flopping the woods and the small engines. So woods will now be on the northeast corner of this diagram, with the addition on the north of that, which will be a high base, base used for large construction. We're also having a major overhaul of the metals and the welding, uh, and manufacturing area, which is just to the west of the new wood slabs. This will include all new welding stations, equipment, furniture, um, a larger space with which to work. That's really going to modernize the, the metals and welding area. We also have tried to accommodate robotics as a club in here, and so to the west of the welding area will be kind of a flexible space that can be used by robotics or just engineering in general. As a final piece of the CTE expansion, we're looking at reconfiguring and outfitting the maker space and the engineering spaces, um, which is here on the left. Another piece that is kind of a shared space that has developed, that will be shared by both CTE, uh, industrial arts as well as arts, is this design collaboration space in blue on the corner. So it's sort of in the intersection of the industrial arts and the art rooms. And the intention is for that space to be shared and used, um, by anyone needing to do presentations. Can invite in outside, um, uh, industry partners to have meetings or presentations there. It's kind of a shared space on the corner and intersection of the hallway that we think will be well-used. Mentioned, the fax, uh, lab will be completely renovated and expanded and, and upsized. Again, using the flexible furniture in the center that can then be moved out to create kitchen islands or kitchen stations along the perimeter, with a, with a full teaching station at the front with a camera that can be projected out to the rest of the students. The major addition, of course, is the kitchen and the cafeteria here. I won't go through it in great detail, but this in orange is the kitchen, and the servery, and the back of house with the loading dock and the receiving. And we have, uh, worked with our kitchen consultant to design sort of two separate serveries, and then also a separate à la carte room, which you'll see in the next diagram. As we've been saying, the, the idea is that we would be able to serve somewhere between eight hundred to eight hundred fifty students per lunch in a three-lunch scenario in the future. And so queuing lines progressing through the servery is important. So we're actually separating out those three, uh, what's called servery one. Here has kind of the two main lines, servery two is a whole different traffic flow. That's for like prepackaged meals that will separate out people, and then à la carte is a, is a whole different location. But it's important to try and separate to, um, get the students to be spread out and not congested.
So on any given day, there will be three different, three different ways for students to access food?
Yeah, so, um, in this diagram, in the lower left or the southwest corner is the main entry into the cafeteria. And from there, students would move to the north to either the, the main servery, or they could go further north to the second servery. The à la carte is viewed as not a full meal, shall I say, but students could go from one of the two serveries down to the à la carte. This, uh, as I mentioned, was part, is part of the storm shelter. So again, we're, we're designing these to, to serve and house twenty-nine hundred people roughly, with the intent, again, if the population of students gets to about twenty-five hundred, staff accordingly is around four hundred. So we've sized it, um, to meet the code requirements for square footage, um, within it. Again, we have a set of bathrooms that are new in the southeast corner, and those are of the universal design, um, which has been the, the direction given. So they're all individual toilet stalls and a common sink, hand washing area outside of that for privacy. Uh, a few kind of very conceptual, uh, three D interior images of that cafeteria, this being, and I, maybe I should highlight, the two areas are of varying heights. So the, the southern, the southern area of the cafeteria is sort of a story plus height, so it's a little bit lower, and we, there's all kinds of structural ramifications or reasons why. And then the larger two-story space is the one to the north. And so there, there will be a variation in the feel for going from one. And so there, there will be a variation in the feel for going from one to another, and that's intentional. So from, this is sort of a areas inside the lower portion, looking out to the north where the windows will be. This is being inside the two-story and looking toward the east. This is looking back towards the serverie. We've also started to develop some of the exterior, and this being a kind of a bird's eye view, looking at the new north entry, which will be a secure entry, and look, and walking through the plaza. So that drop-off lane and pickup lane is what you're seeing where the cars are. On the right-hand side is the cafeteria, the two-story space with the larger windows. And on the left, for reference, is the activity center and the gymnastics. Again, just a, a design concept of that new main entry on the north side that will be connected to both the cafeteria and the activities center. So there'll be a way for people to flow back and forth during the school day, but also at events during the evenings or the weekends. And this is a little bit more of a ground view if you've been dropped off and you're on your way into the main entry. Any other questions or comments before I move into the schedule?
I have a question, as somebody who will actually have a, well, he'll be a senior, so hopefully he'll be driving, and I won't have to deal with merit drop-off because I've dealt with it for three kids already. When you're dropping off a student, say they're coming in late, because you're not dropping off at this main secure door, correct? Because you're dropping off behind.
You'd be on the north side.
So when you're dropping off late, though, how do you get your kid to?
Talk cancer.
Yeah.
All right.
I have a child who doesn't like to get up, so I need to.
So operationally, what this will really help us with is in the morning drop-off and the afternoon pickup. During normal school hours, we'll say that pretty much eight, 30, nine o'clock time, everyone's going to come in through the main entrance, the front entrance, right into the office, they'll be able to check in and move forward. This will really help us alleviate all the congestion on 80th Street. The current looping round, when you can't get in line, have to go back in 80th, back in the parking lot, that, this line, this road is long enough to queue everyone in a single line, and then as they're queued and their kid comes out, they're way back in the line, they'll be able to pull out into the lane and drive on.
So all the 80th Street is not blocked, only into the student lot?
So students will continue to access the south lot as they currently do.
Oh, so they do still go in through 80th? And then there's still the bus? So if you're dropping off late, you would go in like where the buses?
Yeah, yeah.
Do now?
Yep, yep, after school starts, dropping off after a doctor's appointment, yep, drop-in, right off at the, the main entrance.
Okay. I like this, and I will actually have a student that will be there for the, it, it looks really nice. I like the.
I agree.
The, the new, the exterior is what's really kind of drawing me.
That plaza looks really lit, right?
Very nice.
It looks very warm and welcoming for students, I think. This looks really nice, and families.
Because I think, again, this will also serve the activities center as well, in that it's going to be an outdoor gathering area when the weather's nice, football games and the like right across the way. Schedule-wise, as we have been saying, phasing is under review, and this building, of course, it's, it's going to be a hopscotch throughout the building in order to keep the educational services continuing as they need to. But as you can see from that colored diagram, there's a lot of disruption that is planned. So that's why the overall schedule is starting in the summer of '25, but not finishing until the summer of '27. It's our understanding that portions of the building will be turned over as they're finished, so there'll be, it's not that everything will be under construction for two years straight. The first sort of major move onto the site will be that north addition, where the current loading dock is now. So there'll have to be a temporary loading dock while that, that addition is put on, but that's going to be the first major addition. And then in the summer of '26 will be a lot of the interior, sorry, summer of '25 and '26 and '27, there'll be interior renovations throughout. I'm looking at Shane to just verify with that. And again, we, we, it's the same kind of design schedule as Woodbury, in that by the winter of 2025, these bids will be taken. We can move on to Eastridge. Again, similar in process, similar in timeline. We've had a leadership team, we've had advisory group, we've had user group meetings that have been continuous since December and January. Again, somewhat similar, but a little bit different in the, in the scope of work, again, trying to expand that cafeteria and try to alleviate some of the current congestion, and which will be even more on the existing kitchen. Also, in this building, we are expanding the student population, so that's kind of the main difference, I would say, with Eastridge. The building is currently, was designed for somewhere around 1,700 students. Today, there's about 2,100, so obviously, it's crowded. The new addition, classroom addition, it'll be a two-story addition, is intended to serve about 600 additional students, so that would get the capacity of the building up to about 2,300, and we'll see where it goes from there. Again, also trying to expand and improve the CTE offerings and facilities, and there's some other minor renovations that happened throughout.
Don't want to interrupt, what were the capacities of the other two after? I might have missed it.
There won't be, correct me if I'm wrong, but there won't be any additional classroom space in either Woodbury or, Woodbury or Park.
So their capacities aren't going up? Eastridge is the only one that?
Correct.
Okay, it's just the cafeteria capacity?
Okay, okay.
We're building the kitchen, yeah, the kitchen and the cafeteria to serve larger at all sites, but it's only Eastridge that's getting additional classroom space. That's a good clarification. I'll start with the site again, here with Eastridge, in, the areas in gold are the two major additions, so the cafeteria-kitchen expansion is tied to the classroom expansion, all coming off the existing cafeteria, auditorium, black box theater, that's that kind of addition at a 45-degree angle, a new plaza in front of a new activities entrance, and then the CTE expansion off the back where the existing CTE space is located. From a site standpoint, again, we're also trying to alleviate some of the current challenges with traffic flow. And so at Eastridge, what we are aiming to do is to stretch out, I would say, the, again, the drop-off pickup pathway, which is shown in this kind of gold arrow and pathway. So we're reconfiguring the staff parking and expanding the loop before you get to the main entrance to drop off. So coming off Hargis and the Roundabout, you would take an immediate right-hand turn and then loop back around. So in essence, what we're doing is creating more stacking space so that people can get off Hargis more quickly. Also, we are disconnecting that loop so that you can't cross or cheat or connect. So as you see, that those arrows and pathways do not connect. So you, when you come in off Hargis, you must take a right, you can't go left, there would be a physical barrier between the two. With that addition coming to the south and east, we will be taking over, excuse me, some of the parking that's currently there, so we need to replace that by adding some parking on the south side of the eastern lot.
What's currently there now? Is it just grass?
It's just grass. Again, similar concept from a plaza standpoint, same, same components, raised plaza, raised plaza in this case because of the grade, coming up either stairs or a ramp that would run along the building addition on the south side there of the plaza. Raised planters, benches for seating. The lower area would also have some seating areas that's adjacent to the drive lane that runs, that's basically the, the existing drive lane. We're also, in this case, adding what we call a speed table, so it's not a speed bump, but it's a speed table. There's many reasons for why that is a table instead of a bump, but what it does is try to slow down the traffic, because this, of course, is a main thoroughfare from the student parking lot into this entryway. Again, overall plans, first floor, second floor, the gray is primarily areas that are not being modified as part of this project. The additions, classroom on the south and the southeast, the storm shelter in this case is part of the classroom addition. So a two-story hardened structure, which again will, will accommodate 2,900 people. The, I'll get into that as well. Another component in the blue, in the center, is similar to Park, is this creation of a space for online learning. This is the second floor, and if you're familiar with the building, it's kind of a, two, two classrooms conjoined right now. So those walls will be opened up, and that will become the online learning area with the idea that, again, flexible seating and passive supervision within the hallways. Again, similar to Park in the sense that we are creating new science rooms here, this is part of the new addition, kind of sandwiched between the cafeteria expansion and the general education classroom expansion, storm shelter. There will be six new science rooms, and that will add to the 10 existing that are already in the building. There won't be any renovations to the existing science rooms, but these science rooms will all be with modern furniture fixtures, flexible seating, to provide different configurations based on the education that's being delivered at the moment. In between those rooms on both levels is a collaborative area where students can come out to kind of break out, or they can be studying between classes. There's also a, a enclosed collaborative space where a teacher might bring a small group of students out to, or they might just be out there in a, kind of a group dynamic with technology to, to support that. Again, this was, this is the second floor stacked on top of the first, again, three science rooms and that collaborative area in the middle. The classroom addition, again, we've, we've talked a lot through the user groups and advisory groups and leadership team about trying to consolidate departments into a more of a cluster. The, the original building was designed with sort of a scattered approach with the three wings, the blue and the green and the gold. But over time, there's been a desire to move towards more clustering together of departments. So in, in this addition, we're envisioning, there are 12 general ed classrooms and then some special ed rooms to, to assist with that, but that will likely be one department that's housed in this. And we, we have not yet determined what color this will be. That's for tomorrow's meeting. There are some suggestions, but we're working through that. Again, this on first and second floor will also have a collaborative learning area in the center of all of the classroom spaces. Cafeteria addition, again, I apologize, it's a bit choppy because of the gray, but this does flow, and we'll, we'll look at some interior renderings that will show it a little more clearly, but this being, I would say, is sort of the eastern, the new eastern side of the cafeteria where we can increase the seating capacity. We're also, similar to Park, spreading out the cafeteria, or sorry, the, the server, serving lines, so the existing serving lines will be modified to reduce the flow and number of students that go through that existing. And then what we're calling this remote kitchen is very similar to the Park High School serverie two, where it's more prepackaged, and so there's a whole different flow of, of students and queuing through this area. As part of this redesign, we're also moving the concession stand that's currently to the west side of the cafeteria, up right next to the entry doors into the activities center, so it's much more usable and effective in that location.
So this just, so the other two have new, other two high schools have like new purpose-built kitchens and cafeterias, this is an expansion of what is already?
Correct, correct. We will, we are remodeling a little bit of the existing kitchen to make the flow and function better than it is currently, but that, that isn't going to solve everything for 25, 2,700 students, so we've created this other remote kitchen area to help serve that. Again, we have the universal bathrooms grouping on the southeast corner of that cafeteria addition. This is a little more detail of that online learning upstairs, which, if you kind of follow the, the white pathway, this is the existing second-level mezzanine area, and we're expanding that, and that will be a connection back into the new classroom addition on the second floor. We're also, and again, we'll, we'll look at some renderings that might make it a little more clear to, to view it, but we're, we're viewing that bridge or that connection also as a place where students can sit or study or, or hang out there. This view gives you a picture of the new CTE addition to the left, on the west of this. We've gone through a lot of iterations, both of the addition and the existing space, and part of the budget reconciliation process was to hold off on renovating the existing CTE industrial arts areas. It certainly could use some reconfiguration, but we're going to hold off for budget purposes and think about that in a future, perhaps, LTFM or, or other, other funding mechanism. But the, the new space on the left, again, is a very high bay building-centered addition for construction, large construction. Again, it also can be used off-hours and is sized for robotics, but they will have their own storage area within this to kind of keep their stuff away from the majority of the school daily activities. These spaces will be connected through a new storage room as well to both the welding manufacturing on the south and the existing woodworking. We're also doing some minor renovations to some of the special ed spaces, particularly the DCD program. This is in the, on the first floor in a gold pod, and we're actually removing some of the lockers that are in there. That's another thing that we've gone through in this process is investigating and, and actually surveying students and principals. At the high school level, how many people use lockers? It's changed, obviously, from when this building was built or beyond, and so we've kind of come up with a formula of how many is sort of the minimum number of lockers within a high school. And so that, by doing that, that's allowed us to capture some interior space for conference room and staff. This is a three-dimensional exonometric view of the additions primarily, so on the north side, you see the second level is that open online learning space where the existing abid classrooms are. Moving into the new addition, you see the bridge that connects back into the science addition and the general classroom addition, and you start to see some of the collaborative spaces as they interact with the rest. A few interior design drafts, this would be a view standing just inside the new activities entrance, looking back towards the existing cafeteria, and you can see that bridge across the top. Some of the architecture trying to tie in, of course, with the existing, and, and then on the right-hand side, you see the new remote kitchen and concession stand. This is a view from the remote kitchen, looking back again, showing the, the entry up into the second level, and this is a little broader view. This is from the second level, looking back at the entry and the kitchen concession area. One of the things, of course, that the city is interested, we're interested in, the district is interested in, is the exterior architecture, materials blending in with that existing building, so it may be hard to tell what's existing and what's new in this, and that's probably a good thing, but the center area is the new activities entrance, the plaza in front of it, the classroom additions moving towards the left side. And again, just some preliminary renderings of the exterior as you're coming up from the student parking up onto this raised plaza with some of the same design elements that Park has, outdoor seating, raised planters, places for waiting and congregating, and this kind of gives the overall view, bird's eye view of that new entry with some new signage. Any other comments or thoughts about Eastridge? It's maybe a little hard to see, but on the back here, I don't know if my cursor is visible, but there's a ramp that comes up the side of the building.
Okay.
To get up to the, to that plaza level.
Are there currently steps? I don't think so.
No, there's, it's just sort of a sloped grade.
It's just sloped, okay.
But based on the fact that we're pulling the front entry out towards the parking lot, it changes, it becomes more steep, if you can envision that, and so it's too steep for an accessible route, so we had to put stairs in there.
And I do like that you're looking at lockers. I mean, now that you don't carry six textbooks and I don't think kids wear coats. I, I, I like the idea of, you know, kind of doing it, making the school more what kids now do rather than?
What we did.
What we did when we actually wore coats and?
Before the turn of the century.
Boots and walked uphill both ways, isn't that what they used to say? In the snow, five feet of snow. But yeah, I like that you're looking to make it look more modern. I mean, you know, Park, I'm, my son's like?
I didn't highlight Park.
Fourth generation, or third generation at Park, and most of it looks the same as it did when my mom went there, so.
And you're right, I failed to mention, but we are eliminating many of the lockers at Park as well to widen hallways and to allow, actually putting windows into some of the classrooms or the industrial arts areas so that as students or, or staff are walking by, there's that visual interest of what's going on in that space, so it kind of creates more curiosity and visual interest too. Schedule-wise, we have Eastridge being a little bit further along in the design, and this, this project will be going out to bid this fall in the middle of October, and the construction start will actually begin at spring break of 2025. So this will be the first one where Kraus Anderson and their team will start to be visible, and so we've developed the phasing plan a little more, in a little more detail for this project, and I think I'll ask Shane Butler from Kraus Anderson to come up and just kind of walk through the diagrams that his team's put together.
Thanks, Mark. Superintendent Nielsen, Chairperson Swartz, members of the board and the public, I'm Shane Butler with Kraus Anderson Construction, and I promise there's only three more slides. After collaborating with Kyle and Dan and Facilities, Assistant Superintendent Schaefer, Mark with Koma, and then Jim and his team at Eastridge, we've come up with these draft phasing plans for Eastridge High School. What you're looking at here is our draft site phasing plan, so like Mark mentioned, we are going to plan to come in during spring break. The first thing we would do is build a temporary wall past where that activities entrance is, and then we'd actually demo that activities entrance. We'd set our site fencing, which is the dashed red line, set our construction job trailer and kind of get the jobs set up. Once that happens, that activities entrance is going to be no longer accessible by, from the public, from the outside. We will need to leave emergency egressed through the construction zone for the duration of construction, which we are working on with the City of Woodbury and their code officials. The light blue is where we'll have construction parking and material laydown for materials like steel, concrete, masonry block, stuff like that, so those spaces will be lost for the duration of the building addition. The building itself will start in April and will be, be complete in August of 2026. Then you can see the CTE addition, we plan to start that in June after school's out, and that will be ready to turn over around winter break of 2025. And then you can also see the proposed construction traffic and how they would access the site. Here we have a first floor phasing plan with the floor plans. The green area is obviously the big building addition, that's the science, science classrooms, holocart area, and that'll be our, the first phase we start. Obviously, the demo will happen of the activities entrance in spring break, and that will go from April until August of 2026. CT addition, that's June to December of 2025, and then the couple sped remodel areas, also highlighted in light blue, we plan to get those done that first summer. And then the interior remodel highlighted in orange there, that would be completed in the second summer, so then everything would be ready to turn over for fall of 2026. And then here, this is just showing the second level phasing. We talked about the green and the orange, there's the other small sped remodel space kind of towards the bottom there, that'll be done in the first summer. And then that blue highlighted area kind of in the middle, that's actually a structural infill we have to do in the existing building, so right now that's a, a high space, and we're actually going to infill to make it two levels, to add some classrooms, and we're planning to do that that first summer, obviously, when school is out. So that's kind of a general overview, this is just our initial draft, there's some more tinkering we'll have to do with it before we actually go out to bid, but this is the general plan currently.
So how does this work then? If you're, if you're closing the activities entrance, you said spring break of this coming school year?
Correct.
So how does that work for like the plays or concerts or senior award night or any of the other things that people enter through the activities entrance for?
And Jim, do you want to answer that?
So we, good, great question. We do not have a exact answer yet, if I'm, but we are looking at flowing traffic down to doors 15 and 16 to enter the gymnasium.
Oh, okay.
Which is just a little bit to the right of the activities entrance, and then for theater and stuff, we would be going through the black box area.
Okay.
So those are the two alternate. The other option is back behind the building by the baseball field, there is an entry where ticket taking could happen there, and we wouldn't be entering right into the wood floors, but that space is a little small, possibly for fire?
Oh, okay.
Exit, so.
That's our last slide, are there any other questions on the phasing plan? And we will be coming up with similar plans for both Woodbury High School and Park here coming up, once we get closer to the end of design development.
Now, all three of these look really great. I mean, I'm, I'm just really excited to have more modern schools for, have schools in the, from the 21st century for our students.
Thank you.
Well, thanks again.
Thank you, thank you. We have Todd, Jim, Sarah, Sal, Paul, Mark, and Shane, thank you all. Okay, on to 6.2, and that is the yearly review of our mission statement presented by Julie Nielsen, Superintendent.
Thank you. Let's get back to why we exist, right? And I know the construction is great and that is all part of the culture and climate and our environments. If the board recalls, about a year and a half ago, we actually adopted a new mission statement, and in policy, we have that we will just review it with the board. And so while it was just newly adopted, just to remind the board that the mission of South Washington County Schools is to educate students for success, what we determined and why it has come up even within the two years is we'd like to keep the mission statement, for the most part, on the even years, so that when new board members are onboarded, they are typically elected in odd number of years, and so we will continue that review in even number of years. In having conversations with each of you today, I didn't hear any discussions, I wouldn't expect any, but for the board to know related to our mission statement that in August, we will coming, be coming back and talking about what we're considering our district's big work and then how we're going to be measuring that, and so the board can expect a report in August related to our mission statement and the work that we're doing with students. Any questions? Thank you.
Seeing none, we will move on to 7.0, action items. We do have three of those this evening, and the first one is 7.1, proposed policy changes, presented by Superintendent Julie Nielsen.
Thank you. I'm wondering where all the people went, it's policy time. Did you notice that? This evening, I am bringing forth 24 policies, and board members, you are right, it does seem like a large amount, a large number of policies. What I can share with you is the Minnesota School Board Association, MSBA, went through and provided school districts with information based from legislation, so the updates quote directly from new Minnesota laws and legal sources or our clerical updates that do not affect the substance of the policy. And so some of these policies need to be in handbooks, and so they're coming forward this evening for approval, and as you can see, you probably recall and have heard the terms world best workforce, once we get into a term, it changes, so wherever world's best workforce showed up in policy, it needs to be changed or just eliminated. The new wording we'll be using will be comprehensive achievement and civic readiness, and so between just overall language changes, and again, this was provided by the Minnesota School Board Association as a way to take a look at our policies and make those revisions quickly, because again, they were directly part of Minnesota law and only changed legal sources or provided clerical updates. So with that, I am asking for approval of these slight changes. We will continue to keep these policies on our cycle and review them regularly as we do all other policies.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Simi, any comments? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we will move on to 7.2, and that is our District Office Support Specialist Contract, and that will be presented by Abby Baker, Executive Director of Human Resources and Operations.
Good evening, Chair Schwartz, members of the school board, and Superintendent Nielsen. Tonight, I will present item 7.2, the tentative agreement with District Office Support Specialists, also known as DOS. Negotiations toward a new collective bargaining agreement between South Washington County Schools and DOS have resulted in a tentative agreement effective July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2026. Members of the association approved the tentative agreement on July 8, 2024. The economic costing of the tentative agreement includes the following: Year 1 is a 4% increase, Year 2 is a 4.5% increase. For health insurance, the single coverage is an increase of district contributions to the high deductible plan from $650 to $800 in Year 1 and $880 in Year 2. For family coverage, it's an increase of district contributions to the high deductible plan from $1,700 to $2,127 in Year 1 and to $2,339.70 in Year 2. Other contract items were the addition of Juneteenth to the holiday schedule, so administration recommends the approval of this contract.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Motion by Simi, seconded by Eric, any comments? I don't, oh, go ahead. They're 12-month employees, correct?
They are. They are 12-month, they include employees in our tech team and also our finance team.
Yeah, okay, I thought so. Was that the same years? Great minds. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, last action item, 7.3, City of Woodbury Property Purchase, presented by Dan Pine, Executive Director of Finance and Operations.
Good evening again, Chair Schwartz, members of the school board, Superintendent Nielsen. This item, 7.3, has to do with some easements that the City of Woodbury is requesting of us, the City of Woodbury, to meet their current and pending drinking water regulations, that they will be constructing a new water treatment plant south of Hargis Parkway and east of Radio Drive. In a handful of areas, the city needs to request easements from the properties for the installation of the water main, water main pipelines, and they have come to the district, they need easements at 4125 Wood Lane Drive, two, two parcels, that is Bailey Elementary School, and then they need an easement at 4200 Pioneer Drive, and that's at Eastridge High School. And those permanent easements means that they're going to pay us for them, a temporary easement, generally, you just let them use it for the construction, and then you take the, you take the land back. As you can see, they have, I didn't include the appraisals, but I reviewed the appraisals of the property, and you can see that they've, are offering these prices based on the appraisals, using them current market values and the amount of land they're buying, and they're offering $125,700 for one parcel at Bailey and $48,800 for another parcel at Bailey and $114,400 for the parcel at, easement on the parcel at Eastridge. We have, the district council has reviewed the easement agreements, we did make one change to the one they presented to us, and we put the new one in the packet, so administration recommends approval of the permanent and temporary easement agreements.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Simi, seconded by Sharon, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you, Dan. On to 8.0, and that will be the superintendent report.
Thank you. Just to share with the, the board and the community, our new Director of Community Education, Jake Winchell, has started and has been out in the district. He's taken time with me to go take a look at our extended school year, kids club programming, targeted services, along with the many camps and clinics that are going on. At our next board meeting, I believe it's our next workshop meeting, we will be introducing Jake to all of you as well as to the community. And then finally, summer's going quickly, you could tell we're very busy with construction, but a lot of other things happening, and importantly, in two weeks from today, we will be inviting our system leaders back to work in terms of just having some flexibility over the summer. So in two weeks, our leaders will come back, we're hitting August, and, and we're off for a new school year. To close out the meeting, Dan, I, we could have had you stay up here, but I thought, you know, this is a guy who likes to exercise, so why don't you come back up to the podium? And if, if anybody in the community or any other board member saw me, I did take a picture of Dan on my camera, I typically don't ever use my camera, but I thought, you know, we needed to make sure we marked his last board presentation, so Dan, I'll share that picture with you later, and as he comes, as he saunters up here, I do want you to know-
And as he comes, as he saunters up here, I do want you to know that at 6:58 this morning, I called Dan. Dan always arrives by seven, and I wanted to make sure that he was still on time. I mean, because it was his last day. And you would be happy to note that at 6:58, as I called him, he was pulling into the district service center parking lot. So considering that it's 7:45, 7:46, and you started at seven, thank you for a full day's work today, Dan. But interesting is, to close out tonight's meeting, we wanted to say a special thank you and goodbye to Dan Pyne, who will be spending his last day with us before he goes off into retirement. It's been bittersweet celebrating this incredible leader and human being. And we've had a lot of parties already to date. Dan is probably thinking, can we be done? But we can't let you go quite yet. As has been shared, one of Dan's greatest contributions is the spirit of kindness and gratitude that has shaped his leadership and his work. If it's good for kids, Dan will find a way. During Dan's time as our Executive Director of Finance and Operations, he has led and been part of the 2015, 2017, 2021, 2022, and 2023 operating levies and/or bond elections. In that area alone, he has done well over 400 presentations about our district. In addition, we know that he's a friendly face at board meetings each month as he has given financial updates monthly, along with the joke. Sorry, Sharon, we have the jokes. Dan was recognized as the MASBO, the Masbo Business Official of the Year in 2023, and just this past May was named as a district all-star. He has been active with our community organizations and working with our cities and communities. Dan will close out his career tonight. After spending time in the private sector, in Stewartville, New Prague, and Winona Public Schools, he chose South Washington County Schools back in 2014, and we have never been so honored and privileged to have this knowledge, expertise, wisdom, and, don't make me cry, kind-heartedness on our team. Dan has shared that the easiest part of our job, of his job is to be nice to people. He lived by that and will retire with that. Dan, you are a legacy. You'll be missed. We'll keep talking about you, maybe making a little fun of you, but you will not be forgotten. Thank you, congratulations, and we wish you the very best in retirement.
Speech, speech.
Thank you.
Dan, maybe before you talk, I think there may be just a couple of board members that want to say some things. And I do, I should warn you, Simi practiced today. She didn't tell me what she was saying, but she was crying as we were talking.
Okay, so first of all, I'm going to tell you what Melinda said because I shouldn't cry. Melinda, obviously, for anyone in the audience who happens to be watching, is not here. And so she just wanted to tell you that she's sorry she can't be here for your last board meeting. She wants to say thank you for all your hard work and dedication to the district for all these years. She also appreciates how you've made financial reports comprehensible and entertaining. Which is, I mean, obviously, they're always going to be entertaining. She will think of you with fondness every time she sees a dollar bill directed as a school budget graph or here's a good dad joke. Congrats on your retirement and good luck in your future endeavors. She will miss you. And you should know from me, the very first thing I wrote when I wrote my notes was do not cry. So you can see this is going to be super successful, you guys. But like, Dan, I love you. This is really hard for me. And this is not about me, this is about you. But you're my favorite district employee and it's because of how much you care about the students and you care about our staff. And you do everything with such, oh my, good lord. I'm really sorry, you guys. I normally only cry while watching TV shows, but apparently this makes it worse. Yes. And I didn't even wear eye makeup tonight because I was prepared. But you know, we wouldn't be in the same shape fiscally or educationally without you and the foundational building blocks you've put in place for us. You lead with such integrity and honor and goodness and kindness. And I'm just so grateful for everything you've done. Thank you for making CFAC the best committee in South Washington County, the best district committee. I don't care what all you other people say. Thank you for the jokes. And also, my joke for you is, why did the dinosaur cross the road? Because chickens hadn't evolved yet. Okay. My little drum roll. Thank you, thank, whoever did this, God bless you. Thank you for teaching me everything about school finance and why it's so amazing. You guys, like, I am a mess. And being student-centered in everything you do. I mean, I still remember how you presented our budget adjustment process in January of 2021. And numbers people are often very black and white. And I think one of your great things is you've never forgotten the human element in everything you do as a finance director and everything we do as a board. And also your pride when you got to present that scholarship to that student who, because you earned the Masbo honor and you got to present a scholarship to a student. I thank you for mentoring Chris, who's going to be amazing. And I'm really excited that we have someone so wonderful who's coming in to fill your shoes, like literally and metaphorically. I thank you for teaching me only to shop in 833 and screw that Target on Commerce Drive. It's no good when there's a perfectly good Target in Cottage Grove and on Faly Creek Road. And I hope you understand what an asset you are to our district and to me and to all of us as a board. And how well you have laid a foundation. And so you call yourself a bean counter. And so I had to go to two different Targets because the one on Commerce Drive had everything, but screw them. It's in Stillwater. I don't believe in shopping there. And you also get a leftover bag from my son's eighth birthday party because a good CFAC member would never spend money on a gift bag when there is one that has been sitting in her closet for eight and a half years. But in case you are ever lonely and are looking for more beans to count, I give you 10 pounds of beans and only dried beans because everybody knows canned beans are a scam. You're paying for water. Don't do it. But thank you. You have been such an honor to work with and I really appreciate everything you've done. And I can't believe you're ditching us, but whatever, it's fine. Go retire. Have a good life. Enjoy yourself. I'm very sorry, you guys.
Anyone else want to say a few words?
Yeah, I might say a couple of words. Don't do it, Dan. Don't do it. Don't go. Don't do it. Abby, I mean Abby. Baby girl. I can't even remember my grandkid's name, so. Hey, but anyway, Chris, you've got to step up on the joke thing. Dan, I'll be sitting out in front of your house waiting for you to come out. So if I'm there, that means you're coming back to 833. I'm going to miss you, but I'm not going to cry.
Anyone else?
Best of luck in retirement, sir.
Congratulations on a stellar career.
Don't do it.
Do it. Retire. That's why we work.
Oh.
So we can retire.
Oh.
And Dan, thank you. Finance has always been extremely boring to me and you. You, you make it fun. You make it able to sit through the many, many finance presentations. You will definitely be missed. We'll miss the jokes and just seeing you. It was very weird last night that you wore jeans. I don't know that I've ever seen you in jeans. You're usually, you know, the suit and tie guy, but thank you. Thank you for everything. And you will definitely be missed.
Wow, thank you for the kind words. I really don't have much to say. I just, we just try hard and try to be the best district and state. And we're certainly there. I was, I was talking to Abby earlier and telling her about a book I try to read every day or read a chapter. And it's a pretty simple book, but it's Don't Sweat the Small Stuff. It's all small stuff. And there was a, there's a chapter of compassion and it points out that Mother Teresa said, we don't, we can't do great things on this earth. We can only do little things with great love. And keep doing that, and the district will be okay.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, now as I'm losing it, and I don't usually lose it. 9.0, future meeting date. It's August 8, 2024, school board workshop meeting here at the district service center at 6:00 PM. August 22, 2024, our school board business meeting, also here at the district service center at 6:00 PM. And 10.0, we are adjourned.